We are. Per emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020 oh four during the current declared state of emergency, the governor has waived the requirement for RSA 91 A two. Section three, number big. That a quorum body must be physically present as it relates to public meetings. Under the same directive, the governor has also waived the requirement RSA 91. A colon two, number three, see each part of the meeting of the public body to be audible or otherwise discernible to a public at the location specified in the meeting notice. As the location of the meeting. These two requirements are waived. So as long as the public, that's the public body. One provides public access to the meeting by telephone. Additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. Provides public notice to the necessary information for accessing the meeting. Three provides a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are any problems with the access. Attaches the meaning of the public is unable to access the meeting. In accordance with this directive, the Lundery Town Council will conduct its meeting as follows. The public shall have access to participate in the meeting by telephone. To join via telephone, the public call and public may call the number is one six four six five five eight. Six. That's one six five six four six five five eight eight six five six. When prompted into the following code. Eight, eight, nine, four, eight, six, four, four, two, three, five. That's eight, eight, nine, four, eight, six, four, four, two, three, five. And the password is nine, eight, six, eight, nine, five. The meeting will also be broadcast on Lundery Access TV, Government Channel 22, or via live stream at the Lundery Access dot com. This notice, this serves as notice to the public for the necessary information for accessing the meeting. You may also provide public testimony via email. Please email your testimony to kbrown@londonderrynh.org by June 1st, no later than 12:00 PM. Your testimony will be right into public record at the meeting. The council encourages any documentation for the council to consider to be submitted by May 29th, or no later than at 12 o'clock. To allow distribution. To the board at the virtual meeting, you can submit documentation electronically to kbrown@londonderrynh.org, drop it in the black drop boxes in the back of town hall, front of the or front or back doors. Clearly mark your envelope for Kirby Brown. Or maybe mail to the town council of care of Kirby Brown at two, six, five, two, six, eight, B Mammoth Road, Lundery, New Hampshire, oh, three, oh, five, three. If you attempt to pull during the meeting and provide public testimony, you weren't able to access the meeting, please notify Kirby Brown during the meeting by calling six oh, three, four, three, two, one, zero, zero, extension one, two, zero. Or by sending an email to kbrown@londonderrynh.org. If the members, if during the meeting, there are problems to access, with access, Kirby Brown will alert the, the council and the public. And anytime the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned. For a certain, to, to, to a new date. Is that my whole order?
Yep, you just need to take a roll call attendance and identify if. The, if they're alone in the room or who may be present with them.
All right, let me call the meeting to order, call the meeting of the Lundery Town Council to order. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the meeting for June 1st, 2020, and I'll take a roll call vote, starting with the councillor Green.
Hi, Joe Green, I'm here alone.
Councillor Butler.
Hi, Jim Butler, I'm here alone.
Tom Dolan.
Hi, Tom Dolan, I'm alone in my truck.
Councillor Deb Paul.
I am here and I am alone.
Thank you. At this time, I will ask for us to, to rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance, legion flag of the United States of America.
It states. Which stands. And to the republic.
God.
For which it stands, one nation, God, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Please during these hard times, try to keep everyone in mind and for the safety of all. First responders and all citizens of the United States. Let's start off with the public comment. I have an item here under public comment. Traffic update for Litchfield Road. It had been reported to us at the last council meeting that we had some. Some traffic counts to look at and. And the gentleman who was speaking to us is, it appears from our investigation is in a home that was built in 1940. Which is on Litchfield Road, which is very close to the. The current, under the current zoning, it is very close to the right of way. Kevin, who do we have to speak to that this evening?
Chief Hart will be providing an update for us.
Thank you, Chief Hart.
Good evening, thank you for this opportunity to address this matter. We took a look at the numbers and frankly, the numbers based on the data that both the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission had, had put together. And what we put together really show no real discernible difference between the time when. Prior to the construction of Pettingill Road. That said, the number is very high, it's about nearly 6,000 vehicles a day. We are looking at ways to address that. We had planned to address it at the last traffic safety meeting, which was in April, scheduled for April, but wasn't held because of the. COVID-19 situation. We expect the July meeting will be. Scheduled and in person, and we intend to address. It there and really look at some of the challenges that we face out there. The traffic is, it's tough.
Any questions from the council?
I, I don't have a question, but I have a statement. So well over seven years now, I have been complaining to anybody who would listen to me. I've talked to planning board, I've talked to the safety traffic committee, I've talked to the town council. About this issue in this area. You know, what, what I got was a four-way stop sign, which is great, yes and no. Because now that's the starting line for their drag race down Hardy. Basically from the stop sign to my house, most cars are doing about 50. And I welcome the police to sit in my driveway and see how fast these kids are going down this street. Trucks, four o'clock in the morning, big tractor trailer trucks up and down Stonehenge, even though it says no true trucks, and they still do it. They do it two o'clock in the morning, four o'clock in the morning, it's ridiculous and really something needs to be done. And we've been looking at this for over seven years and yet nothing has changed. And it's because of the growth, it's not just petting ill, it's about how fast we grew and we didn't look at our infrastructure of roads. And this is a really serious situation. If we are continuing to grow, this is only going to get compounded and get much worse for the people who do live in this town. Thank you.
So, so chief, help me understand. My understanding from the traffic reports is, is that traffic report that was for a different section of Litchfield Road, which is. West of Mammoth Road, not the other side of Litchfield Road, which is Stonehedge Road, it's not Litchfield Road. The traffic report there was is that the numbers were in the low 5,000s a day, and now they're in the high 5,000s a day, is that what it is?
That's correct.
So in 2010, it was around. I can't remember the number, it was somewhere in the low 5,000s. And today we see an increase of about 700 cars, is that, is that about right?
John.
Yes.
John, if I could, I'm sorry, chief, but if, just to give some context, so it was stated at the last meeting that. It had gone from a thousand cars a week to 5,000 cars a day. And, but that was, that was not an accurate statement, so the daily average cars in 2010 on this section of Litchfield Road. Was approximately 4,200. In, in 2013, it jumped to 5,300. Now, what's interesting about that is that was during a time where there was no growth residential wise in the town in those three years. It was also prior to the build out of Pettingill Road. But what did happen during that time is that the airport access road bridge was built off of Route 3A off Brown Ave. Which. Gave easy access to Route 3 at that time. And so likely what happened is people started using that on-ramp, the Ray Rosorick on-ramp, Roundstone Drive is what it's called. And started cutting, using Litchfield Road as a cut through as it connects both Mammoth Roads and Charles Bancroft Highway in Litchfield. Because the average daily trips then from 2013 to 2016 only went up about 500 cars to about 5,800. And has remained steady since that time. So likely the, the additional increased traffic was more of a result of that new on-ramp from Route 3A. Than it was the building of Pettingill Road at that time.
Okay, now, and, and do we have any, we have a report, do we have a report on, on speed on Litchfield Road?
Not, not a recent one, and by recent, I mean the last three months. Wintertime has the impact of slowing speeds generally anyway. We could do one for the next traffic safety meeting and have a good two-week J-MART study that gives us some good indications. I agree with councillor Paul, I do think the speed is an issue on those cross-through roads.
Okay. Okay, so we can do one for the next meeting, which is in July. And, and then the, the piece about the, about the trucks passing through. That obviously that's an enforcement issue. Do, do you have any information on, on that chief, or is that something that we would have to look further into and get better information?
I don't have any information right now, but it, it is a cut through. That it is used by truckers, oftentimes those folks are using maps provided by the internet and then not local people. Looking for airport drop-off situations. So while we enforce, we're, you know, we try to be respectful of folks who are lost and trying to figure it out.
Mr. Chairman, I give a, a comment?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Yeah, that's, I'll lower my hand, the, the. That when this came up last time, it was mentioned that, that what chief just said, that. That internet mapping is, is directing those unfamiliar, you know, with the shortest, the shortest way from point A to point B. And I think Waze was, is, was mentioned last, the last meeting also, which is probably the, the most popular internet mapping. For truckers and cars, so. My suggestion is that we ask the town manager to get with our IT folks to investigate what it would take. To connect with or inform. The Waze folks or other internet mapping folks to inform them which roads in our community are known through trucking. So that comment would come through when, when they were trying to do, where they're, if they're trying to do a mapping through our town, those, those roads would be identified as know through trucking. And maybe that would help as well.
Okay.
Hey, John.
Yes, I'm sorry, who's speaking?
Yeah, Jim Butler.
Yes. Deb, I saw your hand.
Real quick question, I know that our philosophy and correct me if I'm wrong, in the past has been we stop and educate customers. For the public.
You're asking about our policing policy?
I think that's directed towards me and yes, that's exactly it.
Yeah, and understanding the situation that we have, maybe what we have to do now. In certain areas, ticket everybody. They're going over the speed limit, let's start ticketing them. And, and you know, we'll get to the point where people will know, oh, if you're going to go down those roads, you're going to have to slow down because they ticket you on those roads. You know, it's not what I would like to see, but that may end up being one of the ways in which we could at least slow the traffic down.
Okay, yes, sir.
I, I just, I think that we need to, to also pull over some of these trucks on Litchfield High Range and Stonehenge, wherever the no trucking sign is. And just ask them, where are you going? I mean, an officer can pull somebody over for a broken taillight and go, hey, your light's broken. They, to me, obviously have a right to pull them over on a road they're not supposed to be on and be very polite and just say, hey, what are you doing over here? And that gets out within the truckers after a while and they'll stop doing it. I think it's, it's just getting ridiculous, so that, it's something has to be done.
So, so chief, I mean, respectfully to the police department and everything, and, and as you've probably heard of, you know, more times than you care to hear in your career, that nothing's happening. Perhaps you can tell us what we do already and, and, and what your guidance would be.
Well, my guidance would be that we upgrade the special attention to those particular areas. When we do, there is a diminution in the behavior for a period of time. I think we exercise prudence as always when dealing with folks. I think we act appropriately as law enforcement officers. Using appropriate legal means, which in New Hampshire is articulable suspicion, and we. Educate and enforce.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I could also just add, at the traffic safety committee meeting in October of 2019, there were some speed statistics given out at that time. On, on that road, that particular stretch. Approximately 41.3% of the cars were traveling anywhere between 36 and 40 miles an hour. And 39.6% were traveling anywhere between 41 and 45 miles an hour. So that was your, your predominant amount of people were anywhere between 36 and 45 miles an hour. But as Bill mentioned at the beginning, this is still on the traffic safety committee's agenda to talk about. I know Mr. Prudhomme had mentioned the idea of a gate on Harvey Road to force traffic to use. The Grinnier Field Road way, which is the way we'd prefer that people who are going to cut through use. I don't know if a, a gate is the solution, but perhaps signage, something that would direct people to go around that way to Page Road, Grinnier Field Road. And utilize those intersections as opposed to Litchfield Road.
Right, so we're in public comment. On this particular subject, is there anyone on the phone who, or on, who is on attendee who would like to make comment?
We've got a few phone numbers, I'm going to go through them, okay, individually. So I'm going to unmute the number ending in six, five, three, I believe this is Captain Gandia. Chris, is there anything that you'd like to say?
No, I just wanted to let you know that I'm here in attendance in case questions get brought up that I can help assist with, that's all.
Great, thank you, now I've identified you, so we'll have you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm going to unmute the number ending in eight, six, three, if there's anything you'd like to add to public comment. Okay, you should be.
Not really, Kevin, Kevin set correct numbers regarding the, the traffic on Litchfield Road. And right now, there's nothing else I can add to it.
Thank you, Janos.
Okay.
I'm going to unmute the number ending in.
Hello? Hello?
Okay, the number ending in two, four, one.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello, this is, yeah, this is Ryan Prudhomme. So the only thing that I would like to add is, I did mention the gate at the top of Harvey, but I also. Last year, over a year ago, I mentioned something about speed bumps going down Harvey as another one to deter people. It was just another small thing, but. The, I guess the numbers are the numbers, but it is closer to 6,000. I, I did a count myself in five minutes today and I came up in five minutes with 76 cars going by my house. But, yeah, I mean, the numbers are, yeah, like I said, around 6,000 cars, that's a lot. I think that's too many for a residential road. That's it, I just think something needs to be done.
It, it's not that we don't understand, it's that, you know, we have to figure out what to do next and, and, and we have a, a process and a protocol on how to work through that and work through the traffic safety committee and through the police. So I guess we're going to start there and, and then try to move forward from there and see how we can improve things.
Okay, that's all I have.
John, there's got to be something better, because this has been been brought up many times. There has to be something better or there's something wrong with the protocol. I mean, if, if people have been talking about this for seven years, what can we do? It should be something that's a little.
Go ahead, Deb. Ideas or any solutions, Deb?
I, I think that we should try to pull together either a task force or a work group and actually actively work with the planning department and look at what we, and the police force. And look at what we can do to maybe try to slow this stuff down, moving a little bit quickly. I mean, years are going by, Jim, I've talked to you about the traffic issues for how long ago? It, it's just something that, if I feel like it just was falling on deaf ears and I, I feel for, for Ryan because I'm going through the same thing. And yeah, that's a little selfish, but when you don't live on one of these main streets, you don't see this traffic and you don't understand it, that you can't have a conversation in your backyard. You can't open up your windows, you can't do anything, it's not like living in the country, which I came here for, it's like living in the middle of the city. I, I mean, constant, you know, hearing of the sirens of cars screeching up and down the roads, it's crazy and the trucks, it's just. I don't think you can understand, it's not a nice, relaxing, beautiful country town when you have to listen to that constantly. And I just think we need to move a little bit quicker as opposed to dragging our feet and doing something. That's all.
So, so how would you suggest we move forward, we're dragging our feet for seven years. Why don't you, why don't you make a suggestion, how, what do you think we should do? You, you think we should have a task force?
I think that we.
Well, then, then.
As some sort of task force or a committee.
Well. Colleen, are you on the call?
I am here.
Colleen, do we have traffic reports for, for the, for these roads?
Do we have, well, every time a development happens, they do a traffic impact analysis, but if you're talking about traffic reports, we also have traffic counting that's done by Southern New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission that is available to us as well.
Right, this conversation started off about Litchfield Road, now seems to have moved to Stonehedge and Hardy Road, with the most recent developments on that road. Well, High Range has already been reduced to 30 miles an hour and action was already been taken on High Range. That may be a possibility for these roads, but action was taken on High Range. Now, Stonehedge and Hardy, now with these particular roads, do you have recent, with the development that's happened, do you have recent traffic impact analysis as well as traffic reports?
Yes, I have the analysis prepared for McGregor Cut. Prior to their development going in, as far as numbers after the development went in, we would rely on Southern New Hampshire for their most recent traffic count data.
Um, I, I would say that the. The, the best thing to probably do would be is, is if you could please take those numbers and present them to the traffic committee and. And we have, we have a process, we have a protocol. And to present those numbers and have the traffic committee make a recommendation to the council, whether that be that they're going to implement a lower speed limit, whether they're going to implement, or they're going to ask for any other type of changes. You know, going outside of that and the town council just lowering the speed limit doesn't solve the problem. It needs to be able to work through and answer the questions of the citizens. Now, if you want to do this a different way, then, you know, you can form a task force and come back to us in six months, or we can do this by July. So those are pretty much your choices.
I think we need to see more enforcement and, you know, I think that this would be in front of the council a long time ago. If the safety committee was doing liaison reports on their quarterly meetings to the council as to what was going on. And doing them to the planning board so that the planning board was aware of problems that were going on in different areas. There were people at the safety committee meeting a year ago complaining about over near Anthony. So they're, they're all over the place and I don't see those things coming to the council and, and looking at them, it, you know, it's, it's not something that's new, it's something that's been going on for a long time. And I just want to see something, and I think it's an enforcement thing to take first that we have to do. And hopefully that will trigger stuff, lowering the speed limit, I don't believe is going to help anything. I mean, I remember. Captain Hart, Chief Hart saying that, that they really don't, they stay within the five, and at night, there's nobody there, they do what they want. They shut off their lights and drag down the street, how dangerous is that?
Um, you know.
You guys don't live next to that.
Well, I mean, I, I think we're saying a lot of things right now that, you know. And giving, and we can't give direction to the police department under New Hampshire state law, but I do believe they try to do a good job, they try to enforce the laws here in town. So again, I'll address the council, the council, we have two choices. One is, is that you can, you can go ahead and ask to, we can put a, direct the town manager to put, to assemble a task force. And I believe that, I'm hearing councillor Paul will be the liaison to it, and she seems to think that over the last seven years, nothing has happened, so she can lead that task force. And will get community members to be part of that, I mean, you want something to happen, I'm giving you the opportunity. Or we can.
I don't mind.
Or we can give the information, put the information together, work through the traffic safety committee and try to have them come out with a recommendation in July of what the next step might be, working with the planning department and the police department. So it's really up to the council what you want to do. We just need to give some direction to the town manager.
I would like to do both.
Hey, John, this is Tom. There's something that predates me, which is, makes it pretty prehistoric in terms of council time. When Art Rugg was on the council. As a selectman back in the early 90s, I believe there was a bypass that was. Thought of and actually voted on. And perhaps he could, maybe we could invite him to a future meeting and he could give us the history of. And this, this bypass would, I think was designed to fix, to fix the anticipated problem we're talking about now, that was anticipated back. 25 years ago. And it's not just the last six years, it's been a few decades. So maybe he could give us an update as to, as to what happened with that bypass and how the, I think the town voted on it. And what, how, what the town thought of it and what the consequences of that decision were in our, as of today.
Well, I, I'm sure I could certainly participate in the traffic safety committee meeting as well and get us the answers. We're looking at, when's the traffic safety meeting, in the second week of July?
That's correct.
So in our, you know, our meeting in July is probably going to be in the latter part of July, so they could probably give us an answer by the, our meeting in July. It's up to you guys, what do you want to do?
Hey, Deb, I suggest that you go to that meeting too.
Yes, Joe.
Yeah, I think, I think that that would be the right approach, I think we already have a committee, you know, kind of making a committee out of a committee is kind of duplicative. I think we just have to give some more direction as to what we want to, what we want to have accomplished and then have them come back with some recommendations.
Does that work for you, Chief Hart?
Yes, it does.
Mr. Town Manager, does that work for you?
Works for me.
Chief O'Brien, could you please pull together numbers for responses to accidents on these roads? roads and, you know, transports?
Yes, sir. I can do that for you.
And have that ready for the Traffic Safety Committee. What other data do you think we need to share with the Traffic Safety Committee? So if we're going to try to see if we can get some sort of response out of them quickly. Colleen's going to bring traffic numbers. Whatever we have from the police department, including speed, the fire department will bring transport. What am I missing?
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think you just said something that was, you know, obviously makes a lot of sense. You said that, you know, from the police department, we'll be looking at the speed. But, you know, the town manager, obviously, we have to go through the town manager, but the town manager would recommend some more eyes there. I think we can get probably more data, not only from that standpoint, but, you know, how many people are they actually pulling over there and slowing down, et cetera, that type of thing. So again, more data to be able to provide to the committee in order to have them make a informed decision would be great.
Chief Hart, do you need anything else from us to be able to be ready for that meeting?
Very loud and clear.
Okay. All right. Is there anything further for public comment?
John, this is Tom. I just wanted to add one more thing onto that same topic. Let's, when we put together that, we asked the committee to examine that issue. I think we need to make sure that we're not, if we're going to take 3,000 or 4,000 cars off a particular road and send them down a different road, we're just going to, it's going to be like that game where the squirrel keeps popping up and you keep whacking them on the head, a whack-a-mole game. I mean, if you send, if you take them off of one road and say, now you have to go down this road instead, then the next problem is going to be all the residents on that road saying, hey, there's way too many cars on our road. So if we're not going to eliminate the cars, you're just going to redirect them down somebody else's road. We need to be careful that we just don't keep moving, you know, it's a shell game. We just keep moving the ball under a different shell. So let's make sure that when we give that direction to the committee, that they understand that by redirecting a few thousand cars off of one road and onto another road doesn't necessarily solve the problem.
I would tend to agree. I think what we're, please, anyone correct me if I'm wrong. I believe what we're asking the committee is, is to come up with a plan for tools to enforce or to slow down traffic, not necessarily divert the traffic. And we're also looking for the committee to help educate on through trucks and on, see if we can influence the GPS systems that are on the internet today that people use. Is that where we're going with this? Stage one?
I do think, though, that you should look. It's still diverting some of the traffic. So if I've got 5,000 cars and I'm sharing 1,000 on one road and 1,000 on another and mine has gone down too, so a little bit of the burden is spread out throughout the town, not just on one road. I'm not saying to divert it totally, but, you know, we're all in this town together and so we should all have to share the burden. It's not necessarily fair for one, for certain people, just because their road has become the cut-through road of the time. I don't think it should be taken off the plate.
Well, I think that's, I think that's an interesting way to look at it. What I will say is, is that long before any of these houses were built, Litchfield Road and Stonehedge Road existed and many of the other roads existed. So they're going to have to look at that and probably give us some advice. But that's not, not to be solved here this evening. Okay. Anything further on public comment?
Mr. Chair, I wondered if I could take a few minutes of the council's time and also the community's time to offer a few thoughts on Mr. George Floyd and the riots in our country.
Please proceed, Chief.
Thank you. I wanted to, as I mentioned, take a few minutes to address the murder of George Floyd and the terrible nights of rage and violence that have occurred since and what it means for your police department. A week ago, a man wearing a badge who'd taken an oath to serve and protect the people who live and work in his community, Minneapolis, murdered one of that community's citizens. As he lay suffocating in the street, his dying words were unfortunately familiar to all of us. "I can't breathe. I can't breathe." Sadly, we've heard those words before. Those words have rightly become an anthem of anger and frustration, one that we as police and we as citizens forget at our peril. That anger, that frustration is more clear to us alone in our thoughts at this crazy time when we put those words, "I can't breathe. I can't breathe," in the mouth of our father or our brother, our sister, our mother, our best friend. "I can't breathe." I hope that George Floyd's family, his friends, and those who loved him and cared for him can accept my personal condolences as a 30-year law enforcement officer for this criminal act, one that brings shame and hope to discuss everyone who, like me, wears a badge and who, like me, has taken that oath. As a police officer and as the former county prosecutor, I'm ashamed. Because the event has affected all of us individually and as citizens, I wanted to let you know what we're doing in Londonderry at the PD to prevent this from happening here. For us at LPD, sworn and civilian, every moment of every day is in some way an inoculation against this heinous act happening here. There are three tenants to that success at LPD. A rigorous hiring process, excellent career-long training, strong, well-coached supervision. In committing to each fully, we build a successful policing culture every day, over and over again, lingering on our failures as opportunities to learn and noting briefly our successes. Glad that it went okay. Our hiring process is tough, as you know. Few pass muster, though lots of different kinds of people do. While the hiring process, as it should be, focuses on the skill sets we believe will make a good tactical police officer, we look for more. We look for good people, people who will adopt our culture, our way of policing here in Londonderry. We look for people who want to serve, who understand that service is not in the telling, rather it is in the listening, for whom decency is not just a word, rather it's a way of living. We look for people who can carry out their mission while always understanding that a lot of bad things happen for all of us to be here in your home. We look for people who aspire to professionalism in this noble calling, a calling that may at any moment require your life, but always in every moment requires kindness, empathy, decency, always puts paramount importance on the people part of people's skills. We look for people who know that discretion and good policing of interest tonight sometimes means letting it go, not throwing the book. We look for people who do not lose their aspiration to expect excellence because today he or she failed. Rather, we look for people who mature and wisely understand that personal failure, the professional failure, is often the first step in the lifelong journey towards excellence. We look for people who are not defensive, not name callers, not making excuses, not inflaming, rather calming. We look for men and women who have the inner confidence to know that in my admission of failure, I'm learning, and in learning, I'm preparing myself and my community, the people that I serve every day, for success. We look for people who take responsibility, who search it out, who seek it, who prepare for it, who, when the going gets tough, say, "Let me do that," or "I'll go first." Once we've made that hire, we train, we train again, and then after that, we train again, every day for your entire career. Every day of work for all of us who serve you is aspirational in nature. We as police, and I know I speak for the fire department, aspire to be the very best. And most days, we succeed. We expect excellence from ourselves for you. We supervise to that aspirational goal of noble, decent service to everyone we work. This doesn't happen by accident. We are intentional on your behalf. Every day, that conscious intention is part of what we do. We expect excellence. In every way, that is our culture at LPD. We are not perfect and we have bad jobs and we make bad decisions and we act from anger and fear. We are human beings. And because we are human, we ask our brothers and sisters in blue to look out for us, to help us out when we're going down a wrong road. And then we get up better for our failure, for having learned from our admission to self that we can, as individuals and as police, and we will do better. And then we do it again tomorrow. This is not the first time that an unarmed black man was murdered by police. Please, let it be the last. Enough is enough. I'm 65 years old. I know, nobody thought I was that old. Yet I can remember when I was a child, these same challenges faced our country. I thought that when I was old, as I am now, the obvious injustice of racist, racial inequality in America would be a thing long past. After all that, spring and summer, when I turned 13, were marred by assassination, war. And I heard a man speak when Dr. King died. I thought, people will hear this. We will change and this will be gone when I am old. He said, what we need in the United States is not division. What we need in the United States is not hatred. What we need in the United States is not violence or lawlessness, but love and wisdom and compassion towards one another and a feeling of justice towards those who still suffer within our country, whether they be white or black. That is what we still need every day. And it is up to me as a police officer, it is up to me as a human being, and most of all, as an American, to be love, to be wisdom, to be compassion, to be justice. Indeed, it is up to all of us every day to aspire to those things which make this country, America, great. In doing so, I make my country better. And in doing so, we make our country better. For it is up to us as Americans, if we hope, if we still aspire to be that place that we were told of as children, a place that our grandparents suffered and died to get to, a place of opportunity, a land of hope, a place where you could be safe from the knock on the door in the middle of the night, a place where you are free to be anything or anybody you want to be, a place where a person could breathe. We can do better and we must. Rest in peace, George Floyd. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. I mean, what I can say is, in my many years here in Londonderry, anytime I've encountered a Londonderry police officer, it has been nothing but a respectful interchange. So I thank you and your department for that.
Yeah, let me add that. Chief, what I saw on TV was a failure of leadership in that in that community. And between you and Chief O'Brien, when the push comes to shove, you guys are on the streets, you are exercising good leadership, you're giving directions through your staff or from yourself directly. And that's the difference, I think, of a good force of first responders is leadership, leadership direction. And what I saw in Minneapolis was a failure of leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. We're going to move on from public comment. There is no public hearing this evening. I mean, we have no.
Nope, no, there is.
I'm not seeing a public hearing on my agenda that I was given.
It's number C. There's nothing under it, but Resolution 2020-07 requires a public hearing.
Okay.
It was posted in newspaper a week or so ago.
Okay. Then we will move to Resolution 2020-07, a resolution relative to the acceptance of unanticipated revenue under RSA, RSA 31:95-B. Can I have a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Roll call vote. Counselor Green.
Hi, Joe Green.
Counselor Dolan.
Hi, Tom Dolan.
Counselor Butler. Counselor Butler, Counselor Paul.
Hi, Deb Paul.
I think Jim was muted.
Jim, you're on mute. Thank you. Public hearing is now opening. Justin, please present.
Yes, this resolution is the acceptance of unanticipated revenue in the amount of $341,404.95. We typically do this at year end for all the unanticipated revenue that we receive throughout the year that is relevant. And this year, it includes the citizen's credit card rebate for $53,577.17. The state of New Hampshire municipal aid for $265,506.76. The North Branch Construction Safety Program for $750. The Health Trust Wellness Program for $1,500. And the Department of Health and Human Services for $20,024.24.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are in public hearing. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing no questions, I will go to the public. Is there anyone dialed in from the public who would, might ask questions with regards to this unanticipated revenue? Whoever's out walking around with their phone, if you could go on mute, please? Okay, so I'm not seeing any public comment. I will accept a motion to approve Resolution 2020-07 to accept the unanticipated revenue of $341,404.95. Can I have a motion to accept that, please?
Remove this, Jim, and Joe Green. Second, Jim.
And a second. So roll call vote. Joe Green.
Hi, Joe Green.
Hi, Tom Dolan.
I hear Tom Dolan.
Hi, Jim Butler.
I hear Deb, Jim Butler. Deb Paul, please.
Hi, Deb Paul.
Thank you. And that is a 5-0 vote for acceptance of that unanticipated revenue. Thank you for catching that, Justin.
Thank you.
I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Remove.
Need a second?
Second.
Second by Deb Paul. Roll call vote. Joe Green.
Hi, Joe Green.
Jim Butler.
Hi, Jim Butler.
Deb Paul.
Hi, Deb Paul.
Tom Dolan.
Hi, Tom Dolan.
The public meeting, public hearing is closed. Order 20, under new business 2020-10, in order relative to the expenditure of maintenance trust fund for various projects. Mr. Cotton, are you still on the line?
John, I just promoted him to a panelist.
Okay, we need to unmute him.
Yep, I've asked him to unmute.
So Steve, you need to unmute. There you go. So Steve, we've got two items here. It looks like a hot water heater and an overhead garage door opener.
That is correct. We had a hot water heater leak at the LPD over the weekend, a couple weekends ago. What we're proposing here tonight is that you're going to see a 50-50 split between the Expendable Maintenance Trust and the operating budget after talking with the finance director. The goal here is, since the Expendable Maintenance Trust did not get approved for the next fiscal year, we're currently going through a 50-50 split unless at the end of the fiscal year, we have enough funds in the operating budget from these various departments to pick up the expenditures so that we can control what's coming out of Expendable Maintenance Trust. The first item was the hot water heater for $12,596. So we'd be looking, in the event that the LPD operating budget does not have enough funds at the end of the fiscal year, the Expendable Maintenance Trust would pick up $6,296. The second item is at South Fire Station, one of the overhead door openers that was installed in 2006 became broken and needed to be replaced. Same philosophy. If Darren's budget or the LPD LF budget does not have funding at the end of the fiscal year, Expendable Maintenance Trust would pick up $879. So in the event that either the LPD or the LF budget cannot support this at the end of the fiscal year, we'd be looking to expend $7,177 from Expendable Maintenance Trust.
Okay. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I will accept a motion to approve Order 2020-10. I have a second. I have a second, my first, I need a second, please.
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion, discussion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to reiterate that the Expendable Maintenance Trust Fund is what we use to maintain the various assets we have in town, and we, that failed to pass on the, on the last election. I know this is, I know I'm going to be beating a dead horse, but I think it's got to be very important and understanding by the general public that by defeating that Warren article, that we are going to have a lot of difficulty maintaining the assets that we have accumulated in the town over the past several decades. I would, I would say it's like buying a new car and then declaring that you're never going to change the oil, fix any flat tires, fix any dents, or fix anything that's broken with the car. It doesn't make sense, and I, I think it's a recipe for disaster. And I don't think if the public really understood that account, they would have voted to put millions of dollars in, in community assets and then vote to not maintain them anymore and let them fall into disrepair. I think it was, it was, I think we could take responsibility for not properly educating the town, but I think we also have to accept some responsibility if, in fact, we may have been encouraging voters not to vote for this, because this is something that's very serious, and I think, as we spoke of before previous meetings, we need to look at future solutions that take us out of this precarious situation we're in going forward for the next fiscal year. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll accept a, I need to roll call vote.
Hi, Joe Green. Hi, Joe Green.
Deb Paul.
Hi, Deb Paul.
Jim Butler. You're on mute.
Hi, Tom Dolan.
Tom, Tom Dolan, yes, passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
So I have, I have a, an ordinance here for a first reading. Before I move to wave first reading, this is an amendment to Section five point one five of the London Derry zoning ordinance relating to portable structures. Colleen, perhaps you can give us a brief overview?
Sure, as the town council might remember, back, I guess in December, the planning board had made a recommendation on changes to portable storage after a year or so of discussion, and the town council had some concerns with the language, and it asked us to talk to the town attorney and to take a look at how this would be applied, so we took another stab at it and presented some additional language. Essentially, what we're looking to do is to make these portable storage structures allowed in commercial and industrial zones with approval and review by the site, through the site plan regulations. So maybe administrative review, or maybe through the planning board. But in residential zones, the concern was wanting to protect the character of a residential zone while still allowing these. So we've created language that would allow them by special exception by the ZBA, which doesn't meet the, doesn't require the threshold of a variance, but still gives some regulation in terms of managing where these things are located in the residential zones. So this is a result of you asking us to go and take a harder look at it, and I think we came up with something that's a bit better of a compromise.
Perfect. We have this on public hearing for June fifteenth. Hopefully, the governor will lift the order of ten people and will be able to move to a live meeting. I will accept a motion to wave first reading. I have a motion, I need a second.
Second, Tom Dolan.
So roll call vote.
I do agree.
Green. Jim Butler.
Hi, Jim Butler.
Tom Dolan.
Hi, Tom Dolan.
Deb Paul.
Hi, Deb Paul.
Yeah, just so you guys know, it just depends on the way you pop up on my screen as I'm going through these. There's no particular order, it's just the way that you pop up. Okay, I am missing in my packet Resolution twenty twenty dash oh eight, a resolution relative to the wearing of face masks in Londonderry. Does Kevin happen to have that resolution? Would you like me to read it, John? Yeah, this is, we've had a number of folks in town ask the council to require people in town to wear masks. Under the, under New Hampshire state law, we are not allowed to require people to wear masks in, in all public places. Upon advice of our council, we are, we can require them to wear them in all public buildings, but the resolution speaks to strongly urging everyone to wear masks in public places. I did ask the town attorney about Nashua creating an ordinance to do this, and he didn't feel that that ordinance would withstand the scrutiny of a, of going to, going to court. So he recommended that we go forward with a particular resolution that's going to be read by Kevin.
We're at Resolution twenty twenty dash oh eight, whereas the governor of the state of New Hampshire issued a state of emergency on March thirteen twenty twenty due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, whereas the governor of the state of New Hampshire has extended the state of emergency multiple times since March thirteen twenty twenty, and whereas the governor of the state of New Hampshire issued a stay-at-home order on March twenty-six twenty twenty, whereas the governor of the state of New Hampshire modified the stay-at-home order with emergency order number forty on May one twenty twenty, whereas Exhibit B to emergency order forty provides universal guidelines for New Hampshire employers and employees, whereas universal guidelines rely on guidelines published by the Center for Disease Control and are based on what is currently known about COVID nineteen or intended to protect the public's health and allow New Hampshire to remain open for business, and whereas the CDC recommends wearing cloth face coverings in public settings where other social distancing measures are difficult to maintain, especially in areas of significant community-based transmission. Now therefore be it resolved, but Londonderry Town Council recommends in the strongest manner possible that the Londonderry citizens follow CDC guidelines and wear face mask coverings in public settings where other social distancing measures are difficult to maintain.
Are there any questions? If there are no questions, I'll accept the motion to accept Resolution two zero two zero dash oh eight as written.
Remove, Mr. Chairman.
In a second, please.
Second, Tom Dolan.
I have a motion and a second, roll call vote. Tom Dolan.
Hi, Tom Dolan.
Joe Green.
Hi, Joe Green.
Deb Paul.
Hi, Deb Paul.
Jim Butler.
Hi, Jim Butler.
Resolution two oh, two oh, oh eight, passes five zero, and it goes into effect immediately. My, next item on my agenda is approval of minutes of May eighteenth, twenty twenty, town council meetings, minutes that are presented in our packet. Are there any, any adds or additions to the minutes as presented? Seeing no comment, I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Joe Green.
Motion by Joe, I need a second, please.
Second, Tom Dolan.
I'll say. Thank you, Tom. Roll call vote, Deb Paul.
Hi, Deb Paul.
Joe Green.
Hi, Joe Green.
Jim Butler.
Hi, Jim Butler.
Tom Dolan.
Hi, Tom Dolan.
Okay, thank you, motion passes five zero. Appointment of CIP members, I don't have a list of the CIP members here in my packet. I think we just need a general motion to approve all recommended CIP members. Let me see here. I, let's see, okay, I found one here, wait a minute, there's a memo. It's myself as the town council representative, school board representatives, the chairman from the school board, Mike Saucier, Christine Patton from planning, from the budget committee. Hopefully, she's going to take my suggestion of taking over as chairperson this year. Planning board reps were Al Sipek and Rick Burrito, so if I can, a motion to accept those members as the CIP.
Remove, Mr. Chairman. Joe Green.
Second, Tom Dolan.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Jim Butler.
Hi, Jim Butler.
Joe Green.
Hi, Joe Green.
Deb Paul.
Hi, Deb Paul.
Tom Dolan.
Hi, Tom Dolan.
And motion passes four zero, and we will move, the CIP committee will move forward. Thank you for that. Moving to my next item on the agenda is, is liaison reports, I believe. Getting turned around here on my agenda is what I'm trying to find. There it is, is liaison reports. Is there anything to report from meetings you may have attended since our last town council meeting?
Nope.
John, this is Tom.
Yes, Tom.
I, I didn't attend the, the last budget meeting, but Deb did, and I think we have, we may have an issue with expressing town council desires that we haven't agreed to. Deb may not, Deb may not realize it, but we have, I know that, that one of the things that we do. Excuse me, I know one of the things that we do every year. One of the things that we do every year is, we meet in the summertime, and we, we, we have a strategy, probably in a non-public meeting or, or a non-meeting with our attorney, we develop a strategy for negotiations with the upcoming union contracts, and it's important that we all are on the same page so that we go into these negotiations with what our strategy is and what our objectives are. And what, one of the things that, that came up at the last budget meeting may have unknowingly, by Deb, unknowingly, may have revealed our strategy without coordinating it with the rest of the council as to what we expect out of the unions in terms of union negotiations. So it's, I think it's important that we have to act as one with prior agreement, or else we, we either going to confuse the unions, or we're going to, we're going to be divided when we go and negotiate with the unions, which could, could in the end cost the taxpayers more money instead of less money.
Tom, I spoke as a resident, and I said that very clearly. I am not speaking as a town councillor, I am speaking as a resident, and I brought up two subject matters. One was, I requested as a resident that maybe the budget committee, I wanted to see their temperament on maybe asking all departments on school, library, and town, all governments, to look at cutting the budget by two to three percent. And then I said it would be good if we did this in advance, maybe just getting the dialogue going. And then I also said it might be good to start a conversation with the unions to look at something there, like maybe not accepting raises. But I did it not as a town councillor, I did it as a citizen, and it was just to see what the temperament was of the budget committee and to see if we could get conversations going earlier so that everything isn't crammed down our throats very quickly.
But Deb, I don't think.
That's why.
I, I hear you, but I don't, I don't believe, I don't believe you can legally divorce yourself from the town council just by saying you're speaking as a resident. Now that you're elected, you're always speaking as a town councillor, and with.
Okay, so why do we have that, we have to do that?
No, let me, let me finish. Let me finish. So let me finish. When you, when you ask, when you ask the, them to think about foregoing their raises, that's, that is, you're very close to the line on unfair labor practice, and it could cost us, you know, some legal issues. So that's why it's very important that when we, when we start to develop the strategy for our negotiations with the unions, that we, that we get the advice of, of our council so that we don't do anything inadvertently, even if it's a good idea, if it's, if it's an unfair labor practice, could cost us several thousands of dollars in, in legal litigation. So it's just, it's just a word to the wise, we got to be very careful along, along these lines.
Mr. Chairman, could I have clarification?
Please proceed.
Yeah, and, and correct me if I'm wrong. As I understand it, there was a communication from you concerning the issues that Deb brought up, and was it put in as contents as confidential and privileged information, just so I understand?
So I think there's a couple of points that need to be understood.
Nothing to do with that.
So I just think there needs to be, well, excuse me, but I think there needs to be a couple of points that need to be understood. An easy way to understand this is, is when, for example, when the governor of New Hampshire is elected as the governor, the governor can no longer be anybody but the governor. Right? The same thing applies to us as town councillors. You know, for example, the governor runs a ski resort. Well, he can't run the ski resort and be the ski resort person and the governor. You have to choose. So once you're a town councillor, you're a town councillor twenty-four seven. You can't be the publisher of the newspaper and a town councillor at the same time, and you can't be one or the other. You're an elected official, you're a town councillor, and respectfully, you know, Deb, you and I had this conversation, and you had the conversation with Attorney Ramsdale. So let's just be clear about that, you can't say you're a resident, and, and, and I want to be, you know, trying to be educational here. I went through and I listened to the whole budget committee piece. At the beginning of the meeting, you identify yourself as a town councillor. Then you say you're a resident, and then you identify yourself as a town councillor again at the end of the.
I didn't identify myself, they identified me. They identified me, and I corrected them.
And you are a town councillor.
And I've seen everybody say those things before at meetings.
And, and they're wrong.
But I've seen.
Just because they did it, doesn't mean it's right, they're wrong. You're a town councillor twenty-four seven, so that, that answers one. The second piece to it is, is that things with regards to collective bargaining agreements were shared under a privileged confidential email with town council, and that's all I can say, is there was information shared with that. I'm not saying that you referred to that information, what I'm saying is that information was shared with the council. I hope that answers your question.
Well, it doesn't, but I just, I just feel that we, I've seen every single one of you people say at meetings, I'm speaking as a resident. I am not speaking as this, so now you're telling me that I can't do that, I can't speak at a meeting as a resident, and to compare me to the governor, and he gets paid to do what he does, I don't get paid to do what I do. I'm volunteering basically my time to try to do what's right for the citizens of Londonderry. And if asking questions or, or getting a conversation started is wrong, I guess I don't understand. I mean, I thought that's what our job was, do our best to the citizens of this town. And by asking a question or talking about something, it just seems to me that I have no idea when your, your budget committee, that you, you sit down and make all these plans for things. I thought everything was done in the public. I, I didn't understand, and I still don't understand this whole private thing, because I haven't really seen any of these non-public meetings, we haven't had any, I don't know what they are. I have no idea what goes on in them, I would assume it's only personnel. But I, this had nothing to do with personnel, this was throwing out an idea in lieu of what we're going to be facing this year with the COVID, and to make sure that we got ample time to think about things and make really sound and good decisions as opposed to rushing it, because people aren't around in the summer. That was my thinking, and I'm sorry if that's wrong, I didn't mean any harm, I just wanted to get a conversation going early.
Deb, I want to ask one question, because this is a concern of mine, okay?
Yes, sir.
You got the information, and it was privileged information. So to go to a meeting and, as a councillor and as a private citizen, and take that information and bring it forward. Deb, who's kidding, you can't have.
I didn't bring any of that information forward.
Because my confidentiality.
To do with that.
Is going to be broken out, Deb, because guess what? I don't feel comfortable that I can say anything, or anyone can say anything, and then all of a sudden you bring it up in a public meeting by saying to yourself, oh, well. And then all of a sudden you bring it up in a public meeting by saying to yourself, oh, well, I'm, I'm speaking as a, as a, as a resident. It doesn't work that way, Deb. It doesn't work that way. You've broken my trust with you. And you can say what you want.
You never had any trust with me, Jim, so what does it matter? Stop acting all pious, you didn't trust me to begin with, so stop it.
Stop, will you please?
Just stop.
Please, stop, Deb.
Just.
No, you know something, you can't have your cake and eat it too. And I see this as a direct conflict of interest between you being a counselor and having a news.
Let's not open the door there.
Oh, no, the doors opened, Deb, because you opened it up.
You want those doors open? So you really want them open, Jim?
I'll tell you what. I really doubt it now.
So.
I don't want to hear the, I, I'm sorry, but either.
So I did it not even thinking about that confidentiality thing, I'm thinking about.
You're a public official now, you have to think. Now, if something happens that's been exposed to, to labor unions, great job, just great job. Deb, come on, who's kidding who?
Everything one of them have to realize that in advance.
All up in your face.
You're not going to bully me, stop bullying me.
Stop it, Deb, I'm not going to bully you. You've been in town a long time, you say you know everything, stop, stop playing Mickey the dunce, okay?
I don't know anything, I'm learning.
Or you don't know anything, that's not what you tell people. You, you, you've been in town a long time, you know it all. I'm off, Mr. Chairman, I'm off.
I don't know jack. Good girl, you take your ball and go home, you're behaving like a child.
You don't know jack.
You're behaving like a child. No, I don't, because I was never a counselor.
You have broken confidentiality amongst the counselors.
Hey, Mr. Chairman.
Who you were with.
Mr. Chairman, this is Tom.
Poor Deb, poor Deb Paul, I hear it all the time, stop.
Oh, my God.
Okay, so, so Counselor Dolan.
I'm sorry.
So Counselor Dolan?
Well, two things, one, if you run across, when you run across something where there's potential legal issues, like there, like there are with the informal negotiations with the, with the unions or suggesting that they do something that's contrary to the collective bargaining agreement. The best thing you can do, if you face something like that and you're not sure, is you ask the chairman to call a, a meeting with the town attorney. And then we all sit with the attorney and you press, you present that question on the table saying, I have this issue. Is it okay for me to bring this up in public? And then you get the legal advice from the town attorney and you move forward. The other issue you mentioned about that Sununu gets paid, I think, I think you realize you also get paid for this job you're in now. After, after the first, the next month, start of the fiscal year, you can submit a voucher to get your pay for the year. It's not very much, but it is a paycheck.
Okay.
Yes, according to the charter, the council is already paid and we are, we are identified under the, under the town's insurance. So it's probably, probably time to move on and.
It's Jim.
So I think, I think that, you know, a couple of things here is, is that, you know, the town council has been advised for many years. While you, while, while there may be some memory of people identifying themselves as residents, I know that every meeting I've attended for the last 10 years, I've identified myself as a member of the town council. So, so let's just move that. Joe, I'm sorry, were you raising your hand?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Joe, I missed you, go ahead, please.
And I don't want to pile on, Deb, I just trying to, as a, as a person that's been on the council for a while, I just, I worry about just the language that you used. Ms. Chairman, is it okay if I direct my comments directly to?
Of course, of course.
I just worry about the language you used, saying that you, you don't believe that it's, it's, it's a bad thing to be able to separate yourself from, I'm now speaking as a citizen versus a counselor. I just want to make sure that you feel comfortable with the explanation because what we don't want to have happen is this to continue. Especially as more, more and more privileged information comes out. I just want to make sure you feel comfortable, if you need more explanation, we're all here to talk about it, you know what I mean?
I, I do, Joe, so for example, when somebody just say is on the council, right? And they have a conflict of interest, right? So they can recuse themselves from that or even on the planning board, correct? They step into the audience and I've seen this happen, people will then step up and speak to the issue and they're speaking as a resident. So this is where I'm confused. If I am taking myself out of that position, almost recusing myself as a counselor and saying, I am speaking as, I don't understand the difference.
When you recuse yourself, you recuse yourself as a voting member under the RSA for particular reasons. Budget committee members are budget committee members 24/7. School board members are school board members 24/7. It is the, it's just the way the statute's written, it's the advice that we've been given for the last 10 years. And it's, it's just, it's the way state law operates. And I, I understand it's all hard to understand, but that is the way that we work and that is the way that we function as a council. We function as one body. And that when we, when we do things and go to a non-meeting that you haven't attended, I think you can recall from our discussion, the advice I gave Counselor Combs was, is listen for the first few months because you're not expected to know everything. So, and I, and I think you appreciated that and that's what you told me at the time, so.
No, I did, I did, and I thought I understood that I had the right to do that, I guess I didn't.
Well, I mean, you, you, you're not the budget liaison. Probably going to the liaison and talking to that person, if you didn't want to talk to me, that probably would have been, you know, fine as well. But, you know, but just calling into a meeting and asking for someone to cut the budget and across all three forms of government and for a, and for everyone to forego their raises. And, you know, I mean.
I didn't ask everybody to do that, I thought it was to be looked at, not to be done. I didn't request it to happen, I just wanted to see what they thought about it.
Well, unfortunately, that, that comes very close to creating a ULP. And, and unfortunately, it was all the phone calls I got the next day from all the presidents of the union saying, what's going on? That's why we have to operate as a council and, and work together. So is there anything further on, on this subject before I move off of liaison reports?
Ms. Chairman, one more?
Yes.
Yeah, just, and again, last thing I'd say about it, maybe this will help, is that, you know, look, I mean, it's, it's kind of difficult to be able to forget what you've already heard. So I think part of that reason, part of that reason why that rule is in there is because if you heard something, again, everything we hear allows us to make opinions, right? Everything we hear, whether it be out in the street or in particular in confidence, in a confidential situation, unfortunately, that's going to be in your head, in your head when you're trying to make a comment. And so the reason why you got to be careful about that information is because you can't forget it, it's going to, it's going to be part of the form, format of your, your opinions.
So I'll review for one last time with regards to privilege. When we receive privileged information from our, under attorney-client privilege, you have to be very careful what you do with that information until it's to be used at the appropriate time. If you break privilege, we can't continue to use that mechanism, you know, going forward, this council or any other council, because you have violated the rules. So you must remember to use information the way that it's presented. So let's, let's see about moving forward. Okay, I'm on liaison reports, can I go to the town manager report, please?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I get into the two matters that are on the agenda this evening, I do just want to give the council an update as to where we stand currently. As of today, June 1st, all of the employees are reporting back to town hall. There are some who are still flexing their schedules a bit because of the student remote learning and some childcare camps still being closed. But otherwise, everyone is back at town hall. Town hall officially reopens to the public on June 15th. We have guidance on the website as to how that will look. We'll continue to put out this guidance so the public becomes familiar with it. Essentially, the town clerk's office will be taking walk-ins. The other departments will be by appointment only. We're doing that right now just to cut down on the, on the number of people coming into town hall at any one time. And we are also strongly encouraging, as the previous resolution stated, that all residents wear masks when they come into the building. All of the employees, when they're not at their workstation, are also wearing masks. And so we would ask that, again, the residents in kind do so as well. Budgetarily, we are one month left for this current fiscal year. And knock on wood, we're in fairly good shape still. The budget freeze, which was put back on in the beginning of March, seems to have done the trick. We are approximately 1.4 million in the plus right now. Those numbers are a little skewed by the fact that a little over half a million dollars is earmarked for the Stonehenge 28 project that DOT is still moving forward with. And so the real number is somewhere between eight and $900, eight and $900,000. But nonetheless, we're still looking good on the expenditure side. Revenue side, same story, things are still trending fairly well. Motor vehicles, we should be at about 91.8%. Motor vehicles are at 96%. Building permits are at, looks like 90, 94%. So all in all, things are pretty well on the revenue side. The one area where it's only at about 54%, which is approximately $80,000 still due, would be the interest and costs on late property taxes. Now, why is that? We didn't do our, our deeding process this year because of the governor's executive orders that had us hold off on that process. Typically, when we do that and we send out letters, we get late tax payments at that time. That didn't occur this year, so we are light there. But despite that, it, it looks like we will meet our revenue goals. And just looking into the next fiscal year, I'll be doing a memo at some point for the council as to various options that we have going into the next fiscal year as we anticipate what we think will be a revenue shortfall. The staff, I've directed staff to work on various options on how we can cut expenditures to meet that shortfall. I've stated before, I'll state it again. We're not going to make up any shortfalls through increases in, in property taxes. And so whatever revenue shortfall there is will be made up by a cut in expenditures and probably a combination.
Yeah, whoever's in their car, if you could mute your phone.
No, that was going by my house with windows closed.
I think they need a muffler cap. But anyway, so, so that's, that's where we're looking at a combination of expenditure cuts and use of fund balance to make up for that. But as I said, I'll be doing up a memo at some point for the council to review all of the various options that we'll have in looking at that. One of the items that is on the agenda is dealing with the business funding program that I talked about at the last meeting where I was looking to siphon off $50,000 of the money we've received from the state to allow businesses to apply for that money for reimbursement of expenses for things related to COVID-19 and operating their business to the public, things like the Plexiglas, floor stickers, tables, tents, chairs that they've had to rent. And so what we're looking at doing is it's, it's unclear as to whether or not any of these costs will actually be reimbursed through either the PPP program or the governor's Main Street program. And so what we would like to do is have the businesses who apply for these funds certify that the expenses were not covered by either of these programs in their application. Or if they have applied to cover those expenses, that they would also indicate that as well. So that we at least have an idea if they may be receiving these monies. And what we would also look at doing in this first round is qualifying businesses who are under 50 employees and under 50 employees and limiting it to, up to $1,000. I don't know how many are going to apply and how much they're going to apply for. Obviously, we would make them give us documentation of receipts and what the expenses were and what they were used for. But that is a, a general overview in speaking with Lisa and Attorney Malaguti on how we think we could structure this. So I'm, I'm open to comments, questions?
Kevin?
Sure, Deb?
Kevin?
Yeah.
I, I, since you had mentioned this last week and I was thinking about it, and I, I was wondering if you could think about this, connecting this to, excuse me, the COVID grants that are out there and, and maybe I could even help you find some of them. But it's having a dumpster-free day, since people are stuck in their house and they're cleaning more, they're going out to eat and supporting our restaurants and then having all extra trash and, you know, thinking of more creative ways and maybe that we could take like Wednesday, like a half a day to allow people to, to bring things to the dump for free. It's just, and maybe we might be able to get funds for that because there's this extra trash that people wouldn't be producing. And this way, maybe people will stop dumping some of their trash on the sides of the roads, on the power lines, in the conservation areas, you know, just as, as something like that. I, I just threw it out there, was when you had mentioned the businesses, I started thinking like, this might be good for the residents to do. Anything you have to say to that would be great.
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to talk to Yanos about it. I think what we'd want to look at is obviously, you know, we pay by the tonnage. And so the question would be, you know, how much, while it's not costing the residents anything, how much will it cost the town to do it? However, it may be that the, some of these expenses can also be reimbursable through the monies we received if they are related to. And, and someone did actually bring that up on my municipal manager listserv is that if, if increased trash tonnage has gone up as a result of COVID because more people are home, they're producing more trash, can we reimburse those costs? And the answer from the state seemed to be yes. So nonetheless, doing it, you know, offering it as a free service, I just want to make sure that if that is the route we were going to go, that it would be reimbursable.
And, and please understand that it's not a free service all the time, but just like one day or half a day.
Yes.
From three to seven on Wednesday, that's it. I just thought it would be a nice gesture.
Sure. On the, on that small business program, if there's, if there's no questions from the council, if I could just get a consensus that the parameters I outlined sound good so that we can move forward with actually formalizing the application and, and putting it out there.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you. And then the next item of the.
Copy of the grant?
Oh, what was that?
Kevin?
Yeah.
Can I get a copy of the grant that you're going after for it, just to look at it?
Yeah, so.
To be able to do this, like how it's going to be done?
Sure. Yeah, we already have, I shouldn't say we have the monies, we have up to, we received money from the state to be used for all different COVID-related expenses. And this is one way we can use it is to help businesses in our community. But obviously, when we put the application together, I'm, I'm more than happy to share that. I will share with the entire council.
Thank you very much.
Sure. The other issue is on the town hall annex project. So as I mentioned at the last meeting, the idea is to get started on this project after July 1. If we do not use these funds, they do lapse back into the general fund. If we do not use these funds, they do lapse back into the general fund. So they, they cannot be used for any other purpose, but they would go into surplus. So we have scheduled, we've scheduled the walkthroughs, we've scheduled the bid openings. But obviously, construction isn't scheduled yet. We haven't picked a selected contractor. But if there's, if there's no objection from the council, the idea would be to move forward with trying to get construction underway this summer on that. My fear is if we don't use these monies now, the price, prices of construction are going to go up. And we'll be looking at this three to five years from now and saying, now it's costing us twice as much. And, and we had the money at the time to do it.
So Kevin, I just want clarity with regards to the money. If we don't go ahead and build the addition, those monies go back into the general fund. But they use except to build that building, correct?
That's correct, Jim. And one thing I should mention is that if, if that was the direction we decided to go, the one thing we would have to do is finish the siding on the wall that's currently exposed and the landscaping there as well. So we would still end up using a portion of it anyway to finish it up. But then the rest of it would lapse into the, the general fund.
All right. With that being said, do you feel comfortable with the numbers and, and being able to complete this project without any overages?
So I am going to ask Steve Cotton to unmute himself and look into his crystal ball on this because we haven't, we haven't received any bids yet. But Steve, do you want to comment on this?
But before Steve comments.
Yeah.
Part I think, I think part of will be helpful to everyone in the community is, is that, you know, a lot of projects have been canceled. There's a lot of people out there looking for, you know, for immediate work. I, I would really hope that a contractor who's local, who can keep his employees working would be, would get favored nation status, status. With that said, go ahead, Steve.
Yes, I'm, I'm went to the town, town voters a couple of years ago with a number. I am concerned that with the existing conditions and the price of materials that have already increased significantly, be able to meet those numbers what we originally had planned for.
Yeah. And, and, and it may be that when we get the bids, that that may bear itself out. So.
Well, possibly labor is going to, you know, be a little bit more flexible because some work is better than no work.
Yep. I, John, I would say let's go ahead and get the bids.
We can, we can decide not to do it.
John, this is Tom. I, I agree with Jim. Let's move forward with the bids. I think the voters have expressed a desire for that project. And I think we ought to follow through until we can explain to them why we can't, if that's the case.
Those of us that, this is Joe Green, those of us who actually have projects going on right now, it's at a premium, people, it's hard to find contractors right now. And I think to what Mr. Cotton said, we're going, we're going to have a problem with pricing if we don't do it quickly.
Someone refresh my mind as to how much money we're talking about?
I believe it's around 260,000. Steve, is that correct?
I think it's a little bit more than that. But Justin, Justin has the final number.
The Warren article was for, the Warren article was for $378,500.
Okay.
Which, which included, we spent already for demolition, hazmat, that kind of stuff. So we're down to
316,680.
Right.
Well, I mean, we can get bids and then make a decision from there.
Agreed.
Okay.
Let's just get more information and we'll be able to make a better decision.
Very good.
Do you have an update on Old Home Day?
I do. So we are looking at a scaled down version of Old Home Day this year, unfortunately. The position we're in right now is we don't know what the landscape will look like two months from now when Old Home Day takes place, but basing decisions today, because there's so much planning that goes into it, the governor hasn't even lifted his order of no gatherings of 10 people or more. And so what we're looking at, at least for the fireworks on Friday night, is planning it to be shot off in an area where we could have people park their cars in the various parking lots around the high school, the middle school in Moose Hill, Matthew Thornton, and see the fireworks from all of those different areas while they're either safely in their cars or in lawn chairs right next to their cars. Outside of that, we're looking at some, some alternatives to the other events. But as of today in the guidelines as they stand, it would be very difficult to put on all of the, the different events throughout that week with the existing guidelines.
I think I heard some additional chatter that we were talking about moving the fireworks from Friday to Saturday. And, and possibly as we get closer, looking at seeing if there was a band available to play, but this is all sort of, but, but moving from Friday to Saturday, it looks like that's pretty defined. Yes, no?
Yeah, I think so, John, because it's unlikely that the road race that evening, the boot scoot boogie, it's unlikely they'll be able to put their road race on for the same reasons on the gathering size. And so with that being the case, we would probably move the fireworks from Friday to Saturday. But again, try to have that entertainment that typically is a part of the fireworks display prior to it. Still have that in the parking lot area. So to, to try to make it as, as normal as and as enjoyable as possible.
Yeah, I, I think you need to make that Friday, Saturday decision pretty quickly in order to give the fire chief enough time to put out bids for the fireworks.
Yep.
Okay, Kevin.
Yes, please proceed.
Yes.
I just wanted to tell Kevin, with the band thing, you can do it like they do at the, through the radio station almost. And so people who aren't near the band can tune it in on their car, like they do in the Christmas and the Kings.
Yep.
Do you know what I'm talking about?
I do.
So the people, no matter where you're sitting, you can actually hear the music that goes with the fireworks.
Right. Yep.
Yeah, I think that was, I, I think I'd heard that from somebody else too, but that's a good idea. Okay. All right. Is that it from you, Kevin?
That is, yep.
So, um, MRF Business Funding, we got that, okay. Assistant Town Manager report.
Hey, John, this is Tom.
Yes.
Before we leave the Town Manager, I have a question. One of the things that, that we're looking to do is reengage the public in our meetings at our next meeting if, if we can. We're going to try to do that on the 15th. Someone like me has, I've been encouraging the governor to go a little faster with restarting the economy. But there are a lot of people, we need to recognize, there are a lot of people that are very fearful about reengaging with the public. And that fear could be, find itself in people that are, would be afraid to come to our meetings because it's a public meeting. So Kevin, either, either you or Chief O'Brien perhaps could help us understand how the town council chambers are disinfected and what type of PPE would be available for people that come to a meeting that maybe forget to bring their mask but don't have any hand sanitizer with them.
If, if I could add one other thing to that, there, there would be no reason we can't keep some sort of conference call or Zoom meeting continuing to happen, would there, Lisa?
Yeah.
Right. I'm just thinking if we, if we do it in person on, starting the 15th, I'm just, I'm just wondering, could, could the Town Manager or the Fire Chief educate us on how the, the chambers are, are being disinfected so that, so that at least the public would know?
Absolutely.
So, I mean, so I, should I start? So I, I'll start off by telling you, in preparation for the June 1st meeting, I was having multiple discussions with Darren with regards to whether the order being lifted. We looked at the room, we looked at being able to take chairs out of the room, do the social distancing piece in the room. And that's all I discussed with him. And I'll, I'll yield to the Fire Chief.
Yeah, so I know Lisa has come up with a whole list of guidelines for the reopening of Town Hall and all the employees being there. We got a meeting set up tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM to kind of discuss some of the logistics for when the public is to re-enter into the building. I think, you know, there are going to be masks that are going to be offered there, you know, if people don't come in with them because they're going to require them in the Town Hall. I know Kevin has, you know, hired a company to come over there and disinfect in the, in the past. And we'll probably have to do so more often now that the public is going to be entering the building. But we're trying to keep the public, you know, within certain spaces. So it's not the whole building that needs to be sanitized. We have a, probably something like that we have over at the fire station, some type of fogging device that carries a disinfecting in it that, you know, sits on the surfaces and kills all the germs that are on, on the surfaces. So probably looking at something like that as well.
Great. Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, Lisa, anything for you this evening?
First, I wanted to answer your question about whether we could keep a Zoom meeting open if people wanted to call in. That's something that I can talk about with Drew if we're live, so people are watching us. I just got to figure out to make sure there's no time delay so that we'd actually field questions if necessary at the appropriate time. But we can work on something like that.
Maybe only the telephone number.
Right. And then just a couple of things I wanted to mention, just a reminder, both for the council and our boards, committees, commissions, if anyone happens to be watching, we do have our Right to Know training tomorrow night at 7:00 PM via webinar. So you can enjoy it from the comfort of your home. Stephen Buckley, a lawyer at NHMA, will be doing that training. And the training will actually start at 7:00, but they're going to open the meeting and everyone's been sent instructions at about 6:30 to take care of any technical difficulties, show people how to ask questions, that sort of thing. Another thing I just wanted to mention, if you'll recall, the council enacted an ordinance a couple of years ago with regard to a drought. We are not in drought conditions yet, but we are in abnormally dry status. So I will keep the council apprised whether that ordinance will go back into effect. And other than that, I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
A question, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Deb, I, as a new counselor, I highly recommend you attending that 91A training session. It's, you'll, you'll find a whole bunch of stuff out that you may not have learned in the past, and that would be a, a great take.
I, I want to do it. The problem is it's on a Tuesday and Tuesday is the day I go to print. And it's really hard for me to, that's the one day of the week that is very difficult. I'm gonna try to get it, but I don't know if I'll be able to do it.
Maybe, Lisa, we could tape it?
Yeah, I'll inquire with NHMA if we can do that. There is a presentation that we can, you know, PowerPoint presentation that you can access as well that will have all the information on it.
Okay, because Deb, what, one of the things that, that cued me on that, and please don't think we're piling on, but the, when you mentioned earlier that you thought the non-public sessions are only for personnel issues, they're, they're not. There's, there's a whole list of things you can have a non-public meeting for and, and a non-meeting with attorney for. So expanding your, your repertoire in that, that arena would be helpful to you immensely. I, I would, so I'd recommend if you can't go to the meeting, seek out a taped copy of the meeting and maybe you can watch it and pick up some of those things. Or, and, you know, asking Joe or, or John or the Town Attorney is also, and Lisa, Lisa's a good, Lisa's an attorney also. So she, she knows. So, but that's, that's something that I know I found very valuable. When I was a new counselor, I went to special training for that up, actually was up in the Meredith Town Hall back then. And it was, it was very good. So I'm not, again, not piling on, I'm just, just trying to give you some friendly advice.
Well, I, I get it, Tom, and I, I get it and I appreciate it. It's just, I'll tell you, learning through this remote thing is a lot more challenging, in my opinion, than it would be in person because you can actually sit down and have a conversation and have a dialogue back and forth, but be hesitated or think you're talking over somebody or it, it's very difficult to do this. And you don't want to interrupt people a lot during their business days to ask questions or take time from them when they're working. So, you know, you try to figure it out on your own and you do your reading and you, you, you ask questions and you do the best that you can. I think that once things get sort of back to pseudo-normal, it will be a little bit easier for myself. I'm a very, I learn more by verbal than I do, or than I do other ways, so.
Fair enough.
Okay. Chief Hart, anything else for us this evening?
No, all quiet. Thank you.
Let's hope it stays that way. Chief O'Brien, anything further?
Well, sir, I just wanted to give you an update on the town status. As of today, we had 16 positive cases on the town side and an additional 12 positive cases at the American Assisted Living down on Button Drive. So the numbers town side are going down, which I'm pleased to see. I think people are following the guidelines that are out there. And unfortunately, we've had an outbreak at the assisted living facility now. There's still a weighing, I think about 60 tests. But over the last week, week and a half, we've had about 16 cases down there. That's all I have, sir.
John, let me, if I, if I may, let me add, I, my wife and I went down to the exit four parking lot this evening before the meeting and took a COVID test. It's very easy. It takes no more than about three minutes. And there's no charge for it beyond, you know, your regular insurance. There's no copay or anything like that. And the National Guard is administering the test. So if anybody wants to get tested, you don't have to, you don't need a doctor's referral or anything. You just go right down. You gotta, you gotta go on, go on the website, the state website, and you register there and they call you back and they set an appointment up. And you just drive in, you don't have to get out of your car, you just stick a, stick a swab up your nose through your car window and then you're off and you get your results in a couple of days.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, just one last thing I wanted to add is we now have a, a list of all of the open or the restaurants that are open to outdoor seating on our website. Thank you, Counselor Green, for that suggestion. So if people are, are looking to see what restaurants they can dine at now that the weather's nice outdoors, those are, are listed on our website.
Great. Now, I have been working with the Town Manager. He has to pull together a bunch of information and data. We'll be, we'll be posting a non-meeting with our attorney near term. And it will be a Zoom meeting. And that will happen before the next council meeting. Our next council meeting is June 15th. Before I move to adjourn, is there anything further this evening? Seeing nothing, a motion for an adjournment.
Oh, Mr. Chairman?
Second? I think I see Mr. Dolan speaking, but I can't hear him.
Second from Tom Dolan. Yep, second.
Um, Joe Green?
Hi, Joe Green.
Jim Butler?
Hi, Jim Butler.
Tom Dolan?
Hi, Tom Dolan.
Deb Paul?
Hi, Deb Paul.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned this evening. We hope to be live at 7 o'clock at the Lundy Town Offices in the Musso Chambers, Musso Council Chambers for 7 o'clock. And hopefully the government, governor will lift the order and we'll be able to go back to live meetings. Thank you very much and please be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.